All right. Hopefully that will help.
Okay.
We need to start over. Well, actually, I'll just add, I'll read the other thing. Comment from a public on Agenda item. Just a reminder for those members of the public in attendance, who want two opportunities for a member of the public to comment on required by Agenda items. Public also can get kind of... Noted on our agenda. We appreciate our cooperation. And once again, you can go to needleweekcomments@maneance.org to submit your question. And we have the evening, we have the time at the end of the evening to make your questions. I'm going to go on to approval of amendments. Are there any questions about the previous meetings that we had? No? Correction? If not, can I get a resolution please?
Be resolved before education...
Second? All favor?
Aye.
opposed? I'll give you that. 2019, 2020 audit upon recommendation of the board. Malta Shepherd, first time back. Thank you. Business manager, we have a couple of construction items. We have the building project that we need to be able to...
That is the one. And we have with us tonight Representative from CSAR Scott Wilson Davis and Jason from Bernie's office. And we are, I would like, in a very good place with our building project and being able to move forward. But I'm going to turn it over and I want to make sure the camera is on them. Bear with me for a second. All right. Eric, the gentleman question. All right. So I think we'll start with Scott and your financial report. And then we'll have Jason sign in. And certainly if there are questions from members of the board, I did provide some information in my update this week, but I think this will kind of bring that all together, shine a nice light on where we are at right now and what we need to do moving forward to ensure that we get the aid flowing and move on with the nice complete building.
Right. So thank you. With that, you'll look around here, you see enter kind of back order. Now, we're sitting out in a room that had its carpet replaced that wasn't part of the original plan. And that's complete as well as a lot of the corridors who replaced the flooring there that wasn't part of the original plan. So we took advantage of this to see the bills come to me earlier tonight. It, we had the luxury of time to execute these additional items. It would have otherwise been a little bit more maliciously galling, you know, had they been in a normal course of ethics. So right now, the status is that the, all the prime contractors are substantially complete. In fact, in that yellow envelope that... Are, so, certain some substantial completions that will be filed with the contractor and state education department. I believe there's some other also, some other course finding documents in there as well too. But the, all respective disciplines, the design team have been out here rebuilding, looking, generating punch lists for contractors to be working on. We expect between the next 20 to 30 days, we'll be putting this time through and finish this together. We were fortunate enough to actually had at the last minute received the outstanding paperwork for this year's work, which we, a week ago said, we're not going to get it. We're going to have to put temporary measures in place. And it came. So we're in a very good place on a progress level. The building is completely turned over to the owner, to the district for use. And the, working with consultants and moving things around and stuff has been really kind of easy peasy this year by comparison. So with the here and where, you know, deadlines we've...
I sent the board a picture earlier this week of where we were mid-July last year with the farm.
Pictures of thousands of words. Yes, it is.
I've got a text also that people are still having a hard time hearing. So I don't know if it's...
I think it's proximity to the microphone. So if you could ask whoever's speaking maybe to step up to the microphone, that would be helpful. Or move your chair closer.
Again. So I'm partway through my introduction here on where we're at. So, or conclusion of where we're at, rather. All the rooms are outfitted and included to use, as I said. The financial snapshot that you saw in your packet is limited to four pages this time instead of five. I've omitted the summary sheet because this is where Jason's information is going to come in, he's been collaborating recently for the final cost of the project and where we're at. So he's going to be able to capture that element of it. But I'll run through it real briefly. On page one, you see all the reconciled contracts to date. This is in real time. Excuse me. And you might notice that the contract five, the DPI plumbing, piping, the plumber is only at 88% paid, a little bit lagging compared to the other primes. That's because in recent weeks, we've added some scope to their work, replacing water coolers that were beneficial to the students and staff in the building. And that was one of those things that we had to wait for, lead time wise, that Bill and I were talking about earlier. So that would explain why those numbers are what they are. Understanding that you're getting towards a 95% paid state at this point, leaving what's called retainage on the back end of the... Once the punch lists are completed and signed off on, then those final applications for payment. Pages two, three, and four are the respective change. On page two, you'll see that there were four items, excuse me, added to the general construction contract. On page three, you will see that there was only one item processed this last time, and that was processing a credit for an unused contingency allowance that was in the mechanical contract back... On page four, you will see, excuse me, one of the water coolers that I was just talking about in the plumbing contract and in fire protection, the sprinkler folks, there again was a return of an unused in-contract contingency allowance to the district. So those are the changes since last time, bringing us to what I would normally get into the reconciled values of the overall budget. And at that point in time, if there are no questions, let Jason pick up the summary from there.
Yeah, there's, I think, Murray, you provided this sheet to everybody ahead of time, right? So it's...
And on big picture, Bill.
Yep. So as Scott was mentioning, kind of in place of the summary that they've been providing monthly, we've kind of taken that and put that into a different format that we use. Kind of been tied to the final cost reporting a lot. Here, as we get down to the end here, it would be helpful to take a closer look at the incidentals and see exactly kind of where you stand with the budget, kind of updating some of these final budgets. On the top half of the page, you have the construction contracts. You know, as Scott was going through, you guys are in really good shape. You're, you know, pretty much 90% plus complete with all those. So that's good because you want to be able to do those final cost reports by this December. See if they have the substantial completion documents in, which it sounds like those are pretty much there. And then we have to have everything paid full so we can do those final cost reports to get the aid flowing. So that's all in good shape. And then really on the incidental side, we kind of went through and went through all the lines with a fine toothed bone to see, you know, is there anything else out there looming? And it really came to the conclusion that there wasn't much left on that side except for the closeout of CSAR's contract and then our final few invoices for the closing of the final cost reports and everything. So there wasn't too much, but we just left a little in those budgets to get those closed out. So really what it comes down to, that second highlighted line on the top half of the page, that's kind of where we see things coming in towards the end here, is that you're about 171,000 under budget as things stand today. So that's good news, obviously. You kind of, you're coming in, you got a lot of things done within the project that are great for the district, and you're still coming in a little under budget. So one of the things we talked about on Friday is what you do with those funds. You know, if you do come in under budget, you bonded it. So you're one of that, really, if it's bonded and we don't spend all that money, then what that, what ultimately happens is you move that to a debt service fund. And then that can be used, you know, kind of judiciously over the next couple of years if you'd like, kind of lower the tax impact to the project on the residents. You don't want to use it all at once because that can repair it on, repair the kind of the tax cap. But if you kind of use it with a nice plan over the next, you know, five to seven years, and we can kind of, you know, drop the impact on the tax levy for the residents while also kind of keeping that tax levy nice and managed and nice and flat, if that's how you'd like to go.
And if I can hop in there, you know, we had already asked Bernie Dunning's office to do a five-year fiscal projection to us, which we went through last year with the intent that they would come back and have further conversation with us each year. We've talked to Jason, and that's going to happen either at our October or November meeting. So that, those dollars can be part of that conversation moving forward.
Yep. Right. So we can definitely, you know, factor that in and kind of show an example of what that might look like in terms of, you know, moving those dollars over to debt service fund and utilizing it for that purpose.
I'm understanding that there's a need for a map receipt for any additional work, totally understand that. But there, there, the ability to... Obviously aid, or is this just something that, kind of, think about...
Can I speak to that a little bit? Because you did talk about furniture.
So kind of the original project, right?
Right. So most of those things we've talked about would not be aidable. Furniture right now, with the way we have to set up bathrooms, I'm not sure it would be, and I don't want to spend money just to spend money because we have it left.
I understand we have to go, then, once you got five people.
So I think there's a couple of factors. What can we spend money on wisely that we can use right now? And also, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we miss a date because we are making a purchase that can't come to fruition by the time we have to... Our project. So I think we're pretty much at that line of demarcation and the same based on our conversation Friday, that to look at further spending of the existing monies could put us in jeopardy of not closing out on time and not getting the aid. And I'm not sure that's a chance we want to put.
No, I understand. I know that we thought about coming to project without hoping for that October 31st. The applications after that, I understand. I just thought I would put that there. The question then, doesn't mean no one, there's no aid.
Right. But just because it's not aidable, if the money has already been approved and is there, I mean, if there was something that was, hey, we should do this, is there anything on that scope?
So again, it would have to be approved by a state agent, correct? So there's a process there. And right now, Bill, let's say we ordered all the furniture we wished we could have, which is what we got left. I don't have a place to put it right now.
Any other question? We blacked out the pencil?
I don't think we can get, I don't think we can get it done in time.
Wasn't that part of the, well, who, the blackout work part of the thought? The problem with the tax part was it was making the gate adaptable as well at the entrance. So your conveyor, your fencing, the approach, part of the port, the resurfacing itself, not just the asphalt. And the problem with every scope at this point, depending on camp, is what I was on Friday is, should we do that now? Understand that from hitting the chain again, it could change everything. We might not be able to complete things through the timetable necessary for basically doing the work, which has been the impetus all along to make sure that we achieve that December closing. So my recommendation would be unless you have a very, very strong, 110% idea, we have to do this, that it could be a good point. My comment of the day, right?
Right. Again, because if we don't close out by December this year, then that's about 190,000, it's like a current year that's going to get bumped out 15 years, so.
It didn't have to say anything, anything? You just, it's a, well, it's a, that's a rule sign or something like that, something literally available, that's one thing. Are you talking about meaningful versus entertaining something that's a little bit of a sick work? You know, varying degrees of...
And I'd love to get as much out of it as we could, Billy. You know that. But at the same time, that cost benefit analysis, and at the same time too, hearing Jason talking about being able to offset the impact for taxpayers over the next several years, when we really don't know what the next several years is going to look like for our taxpayers, I think there's some benefit to doing that as well.
We weren't perfect, we were wrong, but it's safe to say that we've actually kind of gone through the process of thinking about what else we need to get done and optimize. And hence the replacement of the water coolers just recently, that organization, so. So we really kind of come to a final point.
There's a light at the end of the tunnel and it's not a prank. And, you know, to Dan, who first got to an area, I had to run into the final completion to protect if I was signing it back then. That would then allow Jason to move forward with his work, with the closeout of the project, move those monies that remain into the debt service fund. And I remind the board too, with that existing debt service fund back in 2015, that allowed us to really take the first step with this project. And we have all learned through this process, I think, that it's projects are in one and done for school districts. We will need to come back to the table again. And moving forward as we are now is going to position us well to do that and with great consideration for the impact it will have on our taxpayers.
Well, the other thing I was saying too is that we right now on the request register have submitted waiver form to the State Education Department for the Building Condition Survey. And the only reason that something like that would be granted is if you have done enough renovation, significant renovation in your building. So we feel like it will be granted because we've done solid work for the past several years now. So you're setting yourself up, this practice, so set yourself up. We want to manage everything well and follow it. So, thirteen, yep, we go for the top, I mean.
And that waiver is not before. It used to be every so many years, and now they just picked your year. And we got picked for this year, which seems like a silly time to do it when everything is as it should be. So we're buying ourselves a little time so we can really do a thorough building condition survey once everything is wrapped up with this project, decision as well moving forward. I think we are set. Do you guys mind saying the change orders? I know they're all owner requested, except the credits. We'll give you credit for those this time. But just in case, if they don't do that, then they are coming up short. Anything else for Jason? That was a long ride for a short conversation.
It's okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, darling.
Yeah, it's good to see faces, you know? Talking to everybody.
Oh, my battery's running out. That's my fault. Let's see how low we are. Hey, Jen, can you go grab my backpack out of my office and my life and pleasure? All right, I think we can go ahead, Jen.
All right. We'll go on to business office for information. Works here, both of the information for warrant number 67910A and warrant numbers three and four, 28 for the month of August 2020. We also have business office for approval. I will apply to transfer to August 2020. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. I was hoping someone could just help out or walk me through what I'm missing here. It's warrant for H41 on the 28th one. The last two pages, right, there was a voided check and reissued on this next page. Or the first page was issued and the second page showed a voided check. Can you just tell me what numbers are being painted? Because amounts, there are different people, different amounts on different pages, but it seems to be the same check number.
The only void was the... All right, Esther, if we're back on though?
There's one more to ask.
Hey, we are still recording.
She says she can see us.
All right. I think we're back in action.
Thank you, Jen.
I still have three attendees on.
Okay.
Yep.
We are clarifying, perhaps, some business office questions.
First report in that, I know I was in the state. So I noted that we should get, it came up with a void. It was issued on the second page. We're going to avoid it for, at the bottom of our document.
No, help me out, because it's two pages, right? On mine, I got from the back, one has to, you want to replace your report signature, the other one doesn't. So which page is the first issue?
Because I ran it here.
Right.
The two. Then I realized where anything was filmed. It was wrong better. So then I avoided it, reissued it, correct that.
You were able to reissue with the same check number?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, can I get a resolution please? Be resolved before... Yeah, it's one other thing.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Be resolved with the Board of Education, the Mannequin Street School District, group include, include budget transfer for August 21st. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. Long to treasurer's report, those are the treasurer's report for the month of August 2020. Are there any questions? If not, can I get a resolution?
Be resolved with the Board of Education, the Mannequin Street School District, group with President of the Board, for the month of August 2020.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Why is he the person? 2019, 2020 audit upon recommendation of the audit committee with the Board of Education, they accept the 2019, 2020 district external audit as completed by Weston Company. Weston Company is present to address the board if needed. Are there any questions about the audit? And we got that meeting prior to this meeting. All right, good. About that, I missed the meeting so very...
It was a clean audit.
A clean audit. If not, can I get a resolution?
Be resolved with the Board of Education, of the Mannequin Street School District, accept the 2019, 2020 district external audit as completed by Weston Company.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. We will move along to 2020, 2021 tax warrant. Oppose motion for the tax warrant and assessment valuation and calculations to be approved and signed by the Board of Education.
I have a question. Can someone explain what a parada exemption payback is?
Yep. It's, it's somebody's taxes. Someone's taxes that were reassessed and it's put on their tax bill. So we deduct it from the tax rate, we'll calculate it, and then it gets added back into the warrant.
Something through the year that the assessment changed?
Somebody lost their exemption.
Okay.
Okay, somebody lost their exemption.
Yeah.
They lost their exemption, so they had to make up the difference.
Was this one person or company, or is this a board?
There was one, one, there was two actually. One was a residential, one was a...
Okay.
What kind of... The Turkish Community Center.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, wasn't really able to turn. I had, I had no idea of that one. Thank you.
I get a resolution.
Be resolved with the Board of Education, the Mannequin Street School District, group resurfacing 2020, 2021 tax warrant in the amount of $6,981,47,21. At $139,89.13, Mannequin Library added $9,152.66 for a parada exemption payback at $11,947.20 additional star payments. And that amount can be collected on this warrant, shall be $7,141,436.10. At this, funded by our pension, are $233,000, $747.20. This warrant is effective after it's properly signed and already the Board of Education.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Jeff, this is the one you all have to sign, and nobody leave without signing.
Change orders.
Eric, I'm going to run down them because I know there will likely be... All right. So we start at the top of page four of the agenda. The 055 for bunk off, that was associated with the removal of the risers in the old music room and the replacement of the need wall. 56 bunk off, that was to extend additional counter space at the school entrance for when parents are coming in and having to process paperwork. 57 bunk off is, was repairs, again at district request, to existing renovated areas to address what were existing conditions. 58 was painter, painting requested by the owner. And that was when we got to the point where our guys were now going back full time to addressing, preparing the building for reentry of students. We deferred that painting to bunk off. 59 was the big one, which you are all aware of, is the storm drain out back. And I have to say, since that's been completed and we had some significant rain, we have not had one puddle left there. 60 for bunk off was to take the flooring to those places that wouldn't have the new flooring and make the flooring uniform throughout the building. 61 was additional owner requested painting. 62 had to do with door frame hardware to existing doors, again to align the peeing. There's a couple in here. BPI number 16 is one of them that has to do with changing the bathrooms to touchless fixtures in light of what we're dealing with now. 17 for BPI has to do with drinking fountains in the 35 wing. 18 BPI is the addition of the middle school water fountain. BPI 19 is changing of staff bathrooms to touchless as well. BPI 20 has to do with the replacement of the K2 water fountainer, fountain with the bubbler or the touchless. Deep L C electric 45 is additional wiring needs in the district office. And then the credits, Mazon 08, the unused plumbing and heating content. And then the credits mazon O eight, the unused uh, plumbing heating contingency. And R B M was the unused contingency for the sprinkler system.
And I got a resolution for the change orders. Be resolved with the board of education and the Manheim Community School District, all the recommendations presented hereby approved the following changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
All right, I think we have three outstanding change orders back, so we're almost there. Okay.
All right, personnel matters appointment. Uh, first for building substitute, Rachel Hops. Can I get a resolution, please?
Be resolved with the board of education of Manheim.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Resilience carries. Thanks, guys. Uh, along to substitute custodian, buckle and lunch aid, Dean Marie Calvaro. Can I get a resolution, please?
Be resolved at the board of education of the Manheim Community School District, approve Dean Marie Calvaro as a substitute custodian, lunch aid and fireable worker for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one school year. And further approve salary schedule.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries uh, the previously mentioned teacher major, Dana Kane. Can I get a resolution?
Be resolved with the board of education of Manheim Community School District, accept the verbal recognition from Dana Kane, the vice president of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Resilience carries uh, more of tutors. Can I get a resolution, please? Be resolved with the board of education of the Manheim Community School District, approve the following honor plus tutors for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries along with mentor.
Be resolved with the board of education of Manheim Community School District, approve the following mentors.
Second.
Aye.
Close. Resilience carries along board of education data. T S E, CPSC recommendations, kind of a resolution, please.
Be resolved at the board of education of the Manheim. Of C S E, C S E recognition has submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Resolution carries. Without the gallows. All right, substitute teacher, fully clear. I get a res- yeah.
Be resolved with board of education of Manheim Community School District, approve the following substitute tutors for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Resolution carries uh, student matters, side side update of the. Copy. Uh, some breakdown of accounts. Got a couple here.
So um, the board has, has been having some discussion about having a retreat. I think the timing to do so um, is really appropriate. Um, we are in a year like no other. We are dealing with some things that we have not dealt with before. Um, in addition to that, in light of COVID and other um, you know, out there, things going on in the communities, both locally and nationally. Um, certainly seeing a light shown on inequity um, and the opportunities that kids have. We historically have taken a look at our, our annual goals and the progress that we have made and enrolled those. We may wish to take a deeper look at our, our goals in light of some of the things we are living through right now. Um, the uncertainties around finances that were touched on a little bit tonight. Um, and I, I think it would be in our interest to do that before mid, the end of the calendar year. Um, I, I would look to October or November. I would almost suggest, we heard that Jason will be coming back to give us the update on our five year financial plan. That perhaps if he does that in October, we might wanna look at November as having a time for the board to come together. Um, to have some conversation. That said, I don't know if you want me to open that up for conversation now, um, or if you wanna have subsequent conversations with the board around that.
Well, something that we've talked about for a while and kind of fine tuned and then COVID hit and then put us back on the power. Right at the, at the end of our capital project, you know, next. You know, we fine tuned our strategic plan. You know, but we're coming up with a amount in our financial picture. Um, and we've got a building uh, survey coming up again, so we're well kind of looking to, okay, we've done this capital project, even though another capital project may not be out there for three to five years, so we'll be, start thinking about that. What are our priorities for that? So really thank you for that. To look at this strategic plan and the direction that we would like to take together collectively. Um, as a district, um, during very uncertain times, so that we can start that planning and conversation now. I think that would be a very prudent thing going about, um, you know, uh, getting hit with something that we didn't expect. We gotta handle this conversation. How to start building, finding that. And going on after that, or. Read with that direction, something else we would like to add or?
You know, I agree. We've been talking about it for a little while. I think, I mean, I think I would like to do a follow up.
It's an overall, we need to bring a little bit of holes. We're gonna have some good data to write, come along with the project. We're gonna have data, we're, we'll have a good foundation.
Also, I would kind of go and settle up maybe going through the, uh, the, or the board conference.
That's right. Actually, there's a strategic planning session at that, so.
So we'll work to schedule that then for November and we'll gather input from all members and, and the data that we talked about as we find out.
We're just knowing that there's an election coming up and maybe some policies, et cetera. Um, that's not my word for us. Um, but um, that's certainly a good data as well, even though we may not have. How come a lot of elections for a couple of weeks? Everybody agrees that we should?
The other item I have on my list, just to, to make the board aware, I have been contacted by Sage, which I think most of you knows where I did my bachelor's work, my doctoral work. They have asked me to be part of a commission with um, a beings commission on educational leadership. Um, and to sit as one of the several local superintendents who will sit on that board and my, is my intent to do that in October. That I will be able to give some valuable insight into the lives that we lead, uh, boots on the ground, but also the potential to take something away that I can bring back that will benefit us. They have also asked me to, and I have done this in the past, um, one of the pieces of the program that I went through for my doctoral work is taking each person who goes through that program and partnering them with a mentor from the field. And they've asked me to serve as a mentor for one of the incoming folks and I will be doing that as well. Um, please don't think that will take away from my work here. That is in addition to, and again, I think both of those opportunities also give me the opportunity to learn real more and bring things of value back to the district.
Let's get on over. We'll go next.
Guys, you know, we get our staff back for, we're here last week. We were incredibly grateful for the additional two days. Um, the teachers were hard at work. I think probably every minute they were in the building. Preparing the remote, getting instruction, getting acclimated toward new technology and our camera systems and the different platforms that they were using. Um, we were able to accomplish on Thursday and Friday by parent pickup. Um, the teachers put materials for, I think that most of our students, I think we had four sets of material left in the middle school and six of them in the elementary school. For our online nurses, we got all of those materials out and that was quite the undertaking. We had our staff to get all of those material board high and make sure that they were in a really good place for kids to come pick them up and then also apply the directions for the kids to know what to do in those first couple of days. Um, one of the highlights I would say of the week is a couple of our staff members created a technology resources page for our families. That is live right now. Um, and then last but not least, our special thank you for teaching. They were incredible. They jumped in and did everything from helping us put together cleaning bins to ancients. Um, they really were just like, tell us what you need and we'll, we'll help with the building ready. So a busy four days. Um, we went by the world and it was hard to believe that we got all of that done. But uh, the staff were in a really good place and welcomed students back. Our weekend day with students today, we were grateful to invite a little bit over a hundred and sixty students back to school with us. There was definitely a buzz outside the field at drop off between parents and students and just excited to be back. Um, based on their day with their teachers, getting reacclimated, seeing each other. Excited to be in the next grade level and just really, really happy just to be back at school. Um, our teachers that worked with our online nurses had an incredible turnout. Um, and they were, had a lot of success signing in and again, a lot of the same kind of getting to know you and just getting our way back in. So we had a very successful weekend with students today. Um, I have to say our safety and health protocols were very well um, received by both our families and our students and our teachers. Um, students did a great job with their masks and their masks. I, I remember a great comment.
It was awesome having this here today. I, I can't even tell you.
On the flip side, um, also today was huge. Uh, it was so exciting. Six months, so. Who else said, was everyone that guy? It was the telltale sign to me when she came home with a big smile, I think. You know, like you said. That was definitely why I dropped her off. She was, you know, a little nervous, a little excited, but, but uh, I thought it was a lot. Thank you, guys. Uh, Miss Salinas, um, piggyback on what Jen was saying, from the welcome arrangements back. This all staff early history, your extraordinary effort, the collective work. I'll keep you back virtually. I'm in person and all the efforts, your building project, your little business. Um, you know, we've been through a lot of difficulties, but seeing you back today. Um, you know, it's not gonna be perfect, of course, and we're gonna work through some things that we may have to natural person. But uh, it's like this funny fashion. Those happen. Um, all. All staff. And you can see it. We don't have anything?
So we'll piggyback on that. So I was trying to thank uh, the staff. Get ready because it's new for everybody. No one knows how to do it. You're trying to figure things out as you go and and then how do you have been my model to make things happen? And you can't even imagine unless you're in the school system what it takes to make it happen. So we wanna thank everyone for that. Uh, I want to thank this panel specifically, uh, well, one, welcome as a new principal into the new role during COVID where half the students aren't in school, right? So I'm sure you also had a, a very uh, interesting and unique time getting up to speed. We thank you for that. I personally want to thank you for the response on emails. Um, and the teachers in the middle school way because I was very confused on well, at least I, I was concerned about sending my kids to school and then confused about what I do, what is the plan? Uh, and so my, all my questions were answered more timely. Uh, nothing but good to say about everyone in the school. Uh, I welcome back the middle school man teacher also. Uh, quickly, right? There's fifteen days left to fill out the census. If you haven't done it, fill out your census. We sent notices. Um, the school, the village and the PTA have been involved in a grant. Money's been spent. They're mailing stuff. There's signs all through the village. Fill out your census. I don't know what else to say. Fill out your census. It's going to save you money in the long run. We'll blow the census and post more taxes. Fill out your census. That's all I can say.
The word I'm getting would be elementary skid kids also had a very good day, so. And he said we were supposed to do five subjects today. We only did math, but often they. Okay, that, that really good first day.
What else? Long uh, initial material. Our next board meeting is Tuesday after work, I think. It's pretty beautiful.
Definitely depends on how.
Yes. Uh, public comment. Please note during the public comment session, you're only going to communicate a half word. Underrated and non-incredible items of board that available to mark. Take care of this time. Topic I would be like remarks. Is anybody?
I just checked out the.
Ready, showering.
Just the earlier comment about it's difficult to hear what's being said.
Okay, if there's nothing further, um, can I get a motion?
And I will say to the public, we will use the meeting and turn the video off. I do not anticipate. Um, we will return to any public session. However, you're more than welcome to stay on in the event that we do.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
All right, let me mute us. And. All right, so we need a motion to re-enter public session. Adjourn executive session. All right.
Just trying to be, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Executive session is adjourned. And we need a motion to re-enter public session.
I made a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. We are in public session. And the motion to adjourn, move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Thank you, everyone.